Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the St. Peter School Board. Special day, special time. It is Thursday, February 20th at 5:00 PM in the St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room. We will call the meeting to order. First item up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Kimberly, do we have any, oh, sorry. We need to consider and adopt the agenda first.
I'll move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted. Kimberly, do you have any requests to speak?
No.
All right. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda, which is in the board book packet online and in front of you.
Mr. Sheris, I'll move.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion about consent agenda or any items you would like to discuss? Discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. We have a student spotlight. Elsie's here. Come on up, Elsie and Mr. Dougherty.
Board Chair Potts, members of the board, I'm very excited to introduce you to the North Spotlight Student of the Month. I was just talking with Elsie's family back here and kind of talking about the ranks of honors at North. And we do, we do a lot of giving of golden tickets to everybody and pulling tickets out of there and giving awards to individuals who get those pulled. And then we have Super Saints, which is another like small elite club, I call them. They get their names along the hallway downstairs. But then there's this Top Club, which is the spotlight, and there's two out of two, like 450 students a year. And so that's Elsie this month. So Elsie, Elsie and I in meeting and getting in, in talking about this honor, I said, a lot of times we, we watch old board meetings and we, we take a look at what that presentation looks like. And we were getting ready for it. And, and she, she stops, the first time I met, she's like, Mr. Dougherty, this is going to be kind of a tight timeline. Our family's going to Florida here, like right before this meeting. And I believe they just got back, like yesterday or the day before, Sunday. So we got it done, though. We got it done. So I had some questions. I had about 12 questions because I said, these board members just want to get to know you, Elsie.
Oh, your mic. Yeah, yeah. There you go.
There we go.
That's better. Sorry. I was so busy helping get those set up early, didn't notice that one. But anyway, I, we sat down with about 12 questions. And the first question on there, I figured she'd want to talk about the trip that she just got back from. And she's like, nope, we're gonna go with these. She's like, no, I don't want to talk about that. Don't talk about that. So let's start with the first one, Elsie. They all want to get to know you. So first question, what sports do you enjoy playing, Elsie, and which one is your favorite? And then do you have any memorable events from those sports?
I enjoy playing softball and basketball. My favorite's softball. And my best memory from softball is this year's fall ball season where my team won the state championship.
And it was right here in St. Peter. That's right. Nobody comes to our home turf, right? All right. Who is your best friend at North Elementary and what makes your friendship special?
My best friend is Addie Sizer, and we've been besties since birth. Our mom, we're friends, so that makes us friends, too.
All right. If you could have any superpower for a day, what would it be and how would you use it?
I would choose invisibility because I would be the champion at hide and seek and I'd play, and I'd play pranks on my sisters.
That is a must. All right. How about, what's your favorite subject in school and why do you enjoy it so much?
My favorite subject is math, especially the operations of multi-digit division and multiplication. I actually have a long division problem that I would love for the, you guys to try.
I will give everyone a chance. And there are a couple of reasons for this. One, you know, she just wants to make sure all the board members know what they're working on for strategies for number sense. But then also to prove to Dr. Graff that in fourth grade, they do do long division for a strategy.
He was questioning me on that the other day. He's like, do fourth graders actually do long division? I said, absolutely. We're gonna prove it at the board meeting. All right. We'll let them work on those and then we're gonna keep going, okay? Next question. Looking ahead, Elsie, what do you hope to achieve or experience before the school year ends?
I'm really looking forward to the kindness retreat.
Okay. So tell us more about that. Like what is the, like what do you think the kindness retreat is? What, what, why is that just like gonna be a highlight?
Um, because I'm, I've heard a lot about it from my teacher and I'm really looking forward to it.
Okay, very good. And then what are you gonna miss about North?
Probably my teachers.
And who'd you have?
I had Mr. Johnson slash Mr. Sindelir in second grade and Mrs. Miles in third grade and Mr. Hasty now in fourth grade.
Very good. And our last question, like if you could pick one secret dress-up day for teachers at North, what would you make them wear?
I'd have them all dressed up as ballerinas because it would be funny and it would be even more hilarious if they would do ballerina dance moves.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep, very good. All right. And then Elsie, you brought your family members. Can you introduce them to the school board?
So that's my mom, Amy, my dad, Corey, my sister Fiona, she's seven, and my grandma, Laura.
Congratulations, everybody. Congratulations. All right. Do you think we've given them enough time to use their long division strategy? Do you want me to collect them? Actually, we'll let the board chair just say like collectively what, what the right answer was.
198.333333.
You went with the decimal. She's pulling out the key that she created.
I got 198.333333.
I stopped. I don't, well, it's hard to do. So I stopped after the second three.
Dr. Potts, did you put the line above the three?
Now I do.
So I went over, stuck over to Elsie right before I said, I, I came up with an answer, too. Now, did you, did you go with the remainder answer or did you go with the decimal? She's like, I did both. All right. Now is the time the board members can ask you some questions, Elsie.
All right. So you answered, asked a lot, but what is your favorite season?
I like fall.
Fall. That's, well, like, that is my favorite season as well.
Right.
I'm guessing you're a reader?
Mm-hmm.
What's your favorite book?
Harry Potter.
Oh, which one?
I like the fourth and the sixth.
Oh, good job.
Good job.
You're such a well-rounded.
I like the math connection, even though I'm a social studies.
That was great.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Very nicely done.
Thanks, Elsie.
Thank you.
And good job, Mom and Dad.
Yeah.
All right. We're moving to the action items. The first item up, item of business up is consider acceptance of gifts, donations, and grants. Dr. Olson.
A donation in the amount of $5,000 was received from Bill and Deb Dixon. The donation will help to cover the costs of the spring choir trip to Puerto Rico for several students, as well as pay for travel to music festivals and events. High school is incredibly thankful for the Dixon support of the choir program, and I recommend you accepting the donation as presented.
I so move.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Pretty cool. And the Dixons are musicians, so they're supporting that, that music background that they've got.
I'd like to point out, it does come out of my inheritance.
Yeah.
It's fine. It's for a good cause.
Well worth, well worth it.
Well, Ben, thank you.
Wait, so do you want us to approve or?
I'm here to serve the board.
Okay.
Solve all the students.
Yeah.
Sounds like he has to excuse himself.
Yeah, he might want to recuse himself. So we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you so much to the Dixon family. Next up, consider policies with legislative requirements for approval with one reading. Dr. Olson.
So all of these policies were reviewed by the policy committee at our last meeting. Actually, Policy 515 was reviewed twice. It was tabled the first time because there was a request for information about how we meet the policy requirements as far as directory information and privacy of information. And we shared that practice. On an annual basis, information is sent to parents about directory information and the opportunity to review student personnel data for their student. So it's really about a note for directory information and then aligning the language with MSBA policy. Policy 522 is kind of interesting. You remember that we passed a new policy, 522, in November based on changes to the Title IX rules and regulations. On January 8th, the Title IX rules and regulations were rescinded. So that means that the policy no longer is in effect. So what this recommendation does is it removes, rescinds the policy that you adopted in November and replaces it with your previous policy with just a couple of modifications to meet more recent MSBA language. Policy 601 removes world's best workforce and replaces it with comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. And for Bill's sake, we also add CACR. Policy 602, organization of school calendar and school day, that just updates the note to align with revised Minnesota law. It really specifies the hours that the various levels of students have to have to meet state requirements. Policy 603, curriculum development, removes again world's best workforce, replaces it with comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. Policy 604, instructional curriculum, that adds the pending changes to the health standards and clarifies sections for compliance with MSBA model language. The health standards will be adopted, I believe, in the policy in 2026, I believe. And then Policy 606.2, selection of library materials, that adds new language regarding school libraries. And one thing that we did do with that model policy is we added some sections on just clarifying how those library media materials are reviewed. So members of the policy committee, other pieces that I might have missed?
No, I think we went through them rather thoroughly, including the rescension and the replacement and all of that. So yeah, we got it.
And so per our policy and MSBA recommendation, policies with legislative changes can be approved with a single reading. And the recommendation on Policy 522 Title IX was also recommended by MSBA because of the change in the law to be able to move that with a single reading. So I would recommend you either determine all policies at once or all together, however you determine.
I would move that we accept all of these policies as stated in the previous statement by Dr. Olson.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion or questions?
So if there is, so if a student or a teacher is teaching on a book and there is like a formal like complaint about that book, and it's getting reviewed, like, does that book, does it, does the teaching continue to go during the reveal?
So there are.
Or does it get pulled like right away?
Yeah. So there are two different, two different pieces. So there's a, there's a, could be a challenge to material that's in your library. That's what this policy references. But then there's another policy that would have a challenge to an instructional curriculum or material like a book used in the classroom. So in those cases, the, the book is put on hold while the review process occurs.
So it's relating how it's being used. So if the teacher's using it for a lesson, then it's instructional material.
Right.
And this is for the library.
Yes.
Okay.
Essentially, the, the practice is the same in both.
Okay.
But doesn't the parent or guardian or whoever's offering the challenge to the book being used in the classroom have the option to opt out and have a substitute?
Yes, there's a, there's the option or opportunity to opt out with a, a different curriculum, but it has to meet
Right.
the state standards and the, and the St. Peter standards in order for that to occur. Right. That's correct.
But there's.
Right.
That's also part of that process.
Correct.
And in either case, there's a form in the policy manual and so on to fill out and a process for an appeal.
Yes.
To be, to be pursued.
All right. I'm putting the cover back on the handlebars.
Okay.
Yep.
Sealed, huh?
Mr. Chair?
Just a question. I know we talked about this to some extent, but Policy 603, is that simply a nomenclature change relative to the name for greater clarification and meaningfulness? Or what actually motivated the name change?
I think it was just the replacement of world's best workforce.
In title.
Because the world's best workforce was eliminated by legislation and replaced with CACR. CACR.
Just curious what the rationale was.
Legislative.
It was a legislative action. I think the, I think the rationale was there's another addition to the requirements in the new civic CACR. And, and it has to do with being prepared for life readiness.
So there was to some extent a logical reason to do it?
Yes.
You're giving a lot of people credit for it.
It's harmless. I just was curious why.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's just the difference between workforce and readiness.
Yes.
Right.
Other discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and we have adopted those policies. Item three, consider change order authorization. Dr. Olson.
So is it, in, in your addendum, you, you can read it. I mean, change orders are things that alter the cost of contract due to unforeseen circumstances. As Seth can attest, in our middle school project that's upcoming now, there will be multiple change orders. I mean, a lot of change orders. And in order to allow the work to go on in a, in a relatively efficient manner, most districts then authorize the superintendent to sign off on change orders up to $50,000. Those of you who were on the board the last time, that was also the practice. Anything over $50,000 needs to come back to the board for approval. So in, in order to keep our work moving on that project, and, and it's starting really fast on June 2nd, we would recommend that you authorize a superintendent to approve change orders of up to $50,000 for the middle school construction project.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm just wondering, when we've just talked about policies, do we not have a policy that governs change orders or limits and amounts that the soup can approve or?
Bill, off the top, I'd have to go back and look, but there, there are some things that you allow the superintendent to, you know, enter into as long as they're part of the approved and adopted budget.
Right.
But in this case, this is different because there are increases in costs that wouldn't be part of the approved or adopted budget.
Except that you always have that contingency.
Yeah, you got the contingency there, but yeah.
I mean, I would just suggest possibly, what the policy committee has nothing to do, they could look and see, see if they could add that to.
So you mean to add it to, to?
To make it a house.
Provide leeway no matter what.
Yeah.
Or to include a policy that says specific to construction projects? Because change orders are specific. You're talking more a policy about what you have approval.
Right.
The superintendent has approval to.
If we already have that, if we would just add a provision about change orders or something.
Yeah, sure.
So you wouldn't have to do this every day.
Gotcha. We'll look at it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm very comfortable with change.
We're kept up to date about any changes anyway. This just allows things to move smoother. So, sounds good.
Any other discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, moving on to some of our information items. The first up is the annual report on mileage and meal reimbursement rates.
So just as it says that the superintendent on an annual basis reports on changes to mileage and reimbursement based on either the IRS as far as the mileage reimbursement, and that moves from 67 cents in 2024 to 70 cents per mile in 2025. And then the U.S. General Services Administration identifies meal costs for breakfast, lunch, and dinner across various places in the United States, but in, in specific to Minnesota, there's breakfast, lunch, and dinner in Minnesota in general. Then there's a different breakfast, lunch, and dinner breakdown, as you can see, for Duluth, for Minneapolis-St. Paul, and for Rochester. So based on past practice, this is how we're moving forward with mileage and meal reimbursement rates. And it's just an informational item that we present on an annual basis to the board to keep you apprised of where we're at with this.
Clarification. So if you're in Bloomington, is that, I mean, is Minneapolis-St. Paul just specific to the borders of those or?
Bill, you're asking really good questions.
It is a good question. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I, I would read this to say you're in Minneapolis and St. Paul. But I could check that out.
Yeah, that's a good question.
We'd have to get the U.S. General Services Administration.
Is Blaine too north? I mean, Coon Rapids? I don't know.
Well, that's, you know, when you talk about the seven county metropolitan area, whether it would expand to that or?
Great question.
Shakopee?
I'll look, I'll look that up.
I would just like to acknowledge that this is not unique to us. It's outlined here. It is an IRS. We're in alignment with that.
Thank you. Anything else with that? Good. Next up, review of policy manual revisions, first reading.
So you have in, in front of you a policy 804. Gus, you want to come up? On information security, as we get more and more into all kinds of different worlds of technology, not the least of which is artificial intelligence, we need to make sure that we are on top of information security and protection and privacy of student and individual records. So Gus, can you just give us a background as to why this policy is coming before them tonight?
Yeah, thank you. In April of 2023, we did a security assessment of our network. And I've been working on those technical controls to eliminate those vulnerabilities. But one area I hadn't had any movement in yet was administrative controls. And so I asked Dr. Olson, and we worked, that's one of my professional goals this year, is to further our improvement in the area of administrative controls. And the first question they ask in administrative controls is do you have a policy, a formalized policy that guides making decisions on information security? And we do not. And, and I know MSBA does not have, I've learned in, in this process now that MSBA does not have a policy on information security because there's not a legislative mandate for it. There are state statutes that mandate student data privacy, but there isn't a statute that you have to have a policy on it, I guess, is what I've learned. So I sought out counsel with South Central Service Co-op and we kind of did some research with them. And they're recommending this policy, which is a copy of Minnetonka. Several metro schools are adopting this information security policy that basically empowers the superintendent to authorize someone to make decisions on student data privacy. Probably, but, and that it is a priority and that we do take it very serious. And we already, we are already doing those things. It just puts it into a policy.
And then Gus, as a result of this, this helps us in the, in the, down the path of getting that risk assessment gold star standard, sort of.
Yep. And it'll probably help cybersecurity insurance, you know, and different things like that.
So again, first reading, and Gus is here. If you have any technical questions about any parts of the policy.
Thank you for looking.
Yeah. Any questions or comments?
I like that this is proactive.
We're not waiting for someone to tell us we have to do it. We've got something in place.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Gus.
Appreciate it.
Next up, presentation of MSBA's Leadership Development Certificate. Oh, you're getting calls about it already. The media's calling. We have a certificate here from MSBA presented to Tracy Stewie, presented upon completion of MSBA's School Board Workshop Series Phase 1 through 4. Congratulations.
Yes. Good work on that.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. And as we, we presented Mr. Count with one last month, and now Tracy, the MSBA provides valuable training that helps us be more effective board members. And so we appreciate the time that you invested in doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next up, NEPAC Annual Compliance Update. Welcome.
So as these guys are just getting seated, this, this is on an annual basis, NEPAC has a duty to pass a resolution of concurrence or non-concurrence, and they're here to report on their, their findings. So you guys go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Charmaine. This is Gayen. She's chair for NEPAC. And like, like Olson, Mr. Olson said that we do this annually. We're a bit early this year, but we were just pleased to announce that NEPAC on January 10th has voted concurrence for St. Peter School Districts. How we voted on this is we go back our, on our application that we submitted to the American Indian Edge, it coincides with the decision if we're concurrent or non-concurrent. And what that does is we go over five, I think it was five or six, five focus areas. And we, at that meeting, we went what has been done, what needs to be done, and new thought process for next year. Would you like to go?
Want me to talk about them?
Yeah.
Okay. So the five areas of focus are support post-secondary preparation for pupils. And we assess that through that the Native American students will participate in career exploration events. Freshmen and sophomores this year showed no interest in doing this, but we had 80% participation from seniors. So that was good. We are paying for ACT fees for three juniors. They took two college field trips and two driver's education.
Our second focus is academic achievements of our American Indian students, and that our main focus was attendance rate. And this year, our findings as of January 2025, our attendance rate is at 91 point.
Ninety.
Ninety, 91.1% as just for Native American students focus. Overall, I think the school district is at 90, 90.1 as a whole district as attendance rate.
That's really good.
Mm-hmm.
I think that before we move on, I want to give Shar credit for that because I think that the native groups that she does with the students is really affecting that. She gives attendance, what are they called? Prizes?
Like incentive. This year for the Native American students, we're, I'm giving incentives, like culturally incentives for Native American students, which makes them not miss a day of school. And it is, it improves their attendance tremendously this year, so.
And if you're in school, you're, you're chance of doing better academically, are improved a lot, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I think that the native groups are helping the students feel more welcome and just like they're able to be who they, who they are and express themselves.
Yes. And now that we've talked about native groups, our focus, our area of focus is three, is making curriculum relevant to our needs of interest of, and interest and cultural, cultural heritage of American Indian pupils. Are we guessed that our measurement was Are we guessed that our measurement was going to be sixty percent? And how this was measured, I did a survey, and I had kids do a survey of one particular question, says, "Do you feel that your culture and heritage are represented in the school and curriculum?" Not all students brought, like, answered the questions, like, only twelve did. And fifty-eight point three percent said sometimes, sixteen point seven percent said yes, and twenty-five percent of the students said no. But in that area, we're in progress, and we're going to make another, this was, this survey was given to them in September, and I'm going to give them another one in probably April or May, and hopefully the numbers have changed.
The focus area four was provide positive reinforcement of the self-image of American Indian pupils. We determined that we, the district is making progress on this, and sixty percent of students see themselves get to their full potential. NAIPAC concurd that we are making progress. The joy days and native groups are certainly helping with this.
And our last focus area is develop intercultural awareness among people, parents, and staff. Our two, two main priorities is the MIA, MIA Conference that's held every year. This year's going to be in Shakopee, and we encourage our parents and NAIPAC go. And this year, we are sending four of our NAIPAC members to go, and then two additional teachers, so altogether it's going to be six representing St. Peter. And that's going to take place in March. And then, our second one, we wanted to really try to hit our numbers, is our increase of our members, eight to ten members. Right now, we are sitting at nine. And I, or right now, we're just trying to recruit more kids to come in district, so that is where we sit in that area. So, all of those, like in this, is in progress, and we're hoping by the end of the year that we get more parents involved, and, yeah.
We did, when we had this conversation, we did also talk about how at some of our meetings and in additional meetings that we have, we do cultural teachings, and we do see increased attendance with students and parents at those meetings in particular.
So with that, with all five areas, we, St. Peter's School District is in concurrence in those areas.
That's great.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you.
You said you had nine parents or nine households that are in your NAIPAC group?
NAIPAC, yeah. That are active members, that come to every meetings and voice their opinions and concerns.
Which I know doesn't, may not seem like a lot, but I mean, getting nine parents to do anything is, I mean, so that's, kudos to you guys to be able to, you know, stay connected with those families and to be able to get them to come to the meeting, so, it's awesome.
Well, thank you for your work. We know how important it is for students to need to feel welcome and affirmed in their, in their educational setting, so you're doing a lot to make that happen, so we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, time for some reports. Building principles. Are you going in waves tonight? Two waves?
Two shifts.
It's the warm-up act here.
Well, good eve, let's just start. Good evening, everyone. From early childhood, just like, you know, we had our school readiness open house last week on Thursday. That's an opportunity for folks to come to our building, take a look at our center, register for preschool in the fall if they're interested or if they just gathered more information. We, and we had a great turnout, so that was, that was fantastic. We have moved to all online registrations now, so the tech department has helped us with that. We're refining the process, this is third year. Every year gets a little bit more user-friendly. So we are getting our applications in. I do want to remind folks who might be watching that we do have a school readiness program. Our goal is to have every child ready for kindergarten, to have that experience prior to kindergarten. We have sliding fee scales and scholarships available, so we want to make sure that kids are coming to preschool and have that experience and that that's affordable for families. So, thank you all for continuing to support school readiness. And then, just a little note about our conferences, we are on the move for our spring conferences in March in Early Chatham.
All right, thank you. February has been busy at South Elementary. We had our Read-A-Thon. Earlier this month, we raised over $4,000 for our Star Pride team, and that buys the Star Pride t-shirts for all of the students to wear, and it also supports the Star Pride activities that we do, like the Rad Zoo and things like that throughout the school year. So the students did a really nice job, and thanks to families and communities for supporting that event. Kindergarten registration is open for the class of 2038, and they are rolling in, yes, it does sound crazy, we had to do the math a couple times to make sure that that was right. But we have our open house coming up, so much like the, the school readiness open house, it's an opportunities for families to come in, for students to come in, see the school, look at the classrooms, meet some of the teachers, play around in the imagination stations. We'll have an obstacle course set up in the gym. So for any family in the St. Peter area that has a kindergarten-age student, even if they're not sure that next year is the year they'll register, maybe they have a summer birthday and they're not sure, like, we certainly encourage everyone to come and just check it out. It's the safari theme, so very fun night for everyone, and that is Tuesday, March 4th, from 5:30 to 7:00, and it's that open house format, so people can come and go as they, as their schedule allows, so we hope to see lots of folks there. Also, in February was our South Music Program hosted at the high school, and so huge thank you to Robin Woods for putting that together. We had packed theater for the kindergarten show, and a packed theater again for the first grade show. The kids put on a spectacular performance, so thanks to Robin, and then also for all of the teachers that volunteered their time to be there and help, so that everything went smoothly. Tuesday of this week was a professional development day, so all of our teachers at South and North and Oshawa were engaged in their Read Act training. We have a few teachers that aren't doing Read Acts, so they were doing some much-needed PLC work, and also doing some curriculum review tasks related to social studies and our ELA curriculum review. And then, last but not least, Stars Academy is starting K-4 in March, and this is for some students that just could use a little more intervention, so it's an opportunity, invitations were sent, and we've gotten a great response from families, so that will be after school in March and April.
And just a reminder, the Stars Academy is part of our targeted services program, and that is self-sustaining, so we are paid, we are reimbursed for any attendance in that program, basically.
Very good. Well, greetings from North Elementary, and it must be, yeah, transition planning time, because we were just about incoming second graders, like, that whole process, so we're just starting the planning for that for May, so here we go. It's been very busy currently at North. Yesterday, we had the first evening of spring play tryouts, it's going to be the Velveteen Rabbit. About 100 students are interested, this is second, third, and fourth grade, so they were doing tryouts. Yeah, it's just, it's amazing, like, almost one-fourth of the population of, at North is a lot of interest in performing arts, so it's very cool. And then that is going to be performed at North on April 30th, so stay tuned.
North and South students?
Yeah, oh yeah, that's right, so we're having South students come over for the first time, so that's Play Director, Mr. Lenhoff, in second grade, and he kind of recruits his whole family to do that, and gets a lot of grant dollars to support that as well. Also, we're just finishing up, as of tonight, sixteen hours of spring conferences, doesn't feel like spring out, but right after we do building updates, I'm going to scoot out to the finishing of the conferences at North. And we always want to thank families for partnering, I mean, we get such high participation rates, I mean, easily into the ninety percent participation at North all the time, so thank you for partnering for your child's education community. Also, Kindness Retreat is coming up next week for only fourth graders, that's on the 27th, and thank you National Honor Society students, we get a lot of, probably over thirty, twenty to thirty students that come from the high school that help out with that, so thank that crew. Young Writers Conference is coming up next week on March 4th, a lot of students in third and fourth grade participate in that. And on the 6th of, of March, we have Arts and Academic Night, and so come check out the Spelling Bee, we have quite the competition in there, and then, of course, Interest Fair, Science Fair, Book Fair, any type of fair you want to dream up, we will have it going on at North Elementary School.
Thank you.
Been a busy couple, or month for the middle school, too. We'll start with our Joy Day that we hosted at SPMES on the 24th of January. So if you remember, we talked about that last meeting as an upcoming event. We accommodated that Joy Day by running a modified schedule for our eighth graders. Our eighth graders went through three sessions that were led by guests on native culture, and then we ended the day with all of our students attending a really, really awesome assembly, that included native dance, native drum, singing, and then our St. Peter students put up our teepee while all of that was going on, and just watching our students just like, and everybody was kind of doing this to a drum. So, huge thank you to everybody who put that on, especially John Lorne and Charmaine Law. All I can say is the event was awesome, just had really good feedback from students and staff, and it's definitely something we want to continue to build on at SPMES. Next, just want to talk about our theater department, they are working their tails off, preparing for our upcoming play. Public performances will be on March 7th and 8th, and that play is Puffs, which is like a spin-off of Harry Potter, the, the house that nobody wanted to be a part of, I guess. Should be, should be funny. And then, also want to mention History Day, so our seventh grade History Day projects, students presented those on February 7th. We have thirty projects that qualified for Regions, which is in MSU on March 3rd, and that's forty-nine students who are competing in that. Last year, we sent eight on to state, and we're hoping for even more this year, so really positive growth in that, that project. And then, want to just mention PD Day. PD Day, earlier this week, the middle school spent their day with three sessions in the morning. The first session was culturally responsive teaching, some of the work that John Lorne is carrying on, and also tied to the new rubric that we'll be adopting next school year for our teacher development program. Then we talked about PBIS, just some highlights of, of the program and how we feel it's really effective at the middle school. We're starting to see some really positive momentum. One of those pieces, or a piece of that, is our assemblies. We're finding a lot of success with bringing everybody together at least quarterly to just celebrate the great work that's going on. And then, we talked about learning progression, so we're doing a lot of work with grading and assessment, and hopefully we see some, some positive movement through that. And then our afternoon was, was PLC work, so want to thank the board for providing us with time for professional development. It's hugely beneficial for us, and hopefully we'll see some huge growth because...
I'd like to highlight our high school Spanish department. Vero Castillo-Clark took, I believe, all of her Spanish II and Spanish IV kids, excuse me, III and IV kids, and the Spanish IV kids presented to different groups to who get a passport, and then they walk around and give a presentation on their animal. And I didn't have the opportunity to join them, but she invited me to her class when they were doing their presentations in rehearsal, and they were amazing. I am blown away every time I observe one of her courses. It's fun to get in there at the beginning of the year, and then at the end of the year, and these, the young people in that Spanish IV class were, sounded fluent to me, anyway. Very impressive, so that, that trip, they've done regularly, but it's really, it's taken a few years to build that back now after COVID. Sorry. But, but if, if the other schools were as impressive as our students, I'm sure it was a great day for everybody. It's not just me hearing that, right? Okay? Okay? Courtney Shoemaker is, is one of our two fax teachers, and she recently received a $4,000 grant, a future Ready CTE grant. It's, it's, it's a fairly complicated application process, but she is in the first year of teaching a baking and pastries class, and so when we outfitted that culinary kitchen, we didn't, we weren't planning, we didn't know what classes we were going to be offering, truth be told, so she was able, she was able to purchase KitchenAid mixers and attachments for those, and, and cuisinarts as well. So, thank you to her for writing that grant and, and really helping to build that program. And again, I point out every time, that kitchen was well-placed when we designed that building, because it's directly across from the administrative offices, so I was pleased with the baking and pastry class as well. We have conferences this coming Thursday night, next, next week on the 27th, and we are hosting a parent meeting for parents of ninth graders about our Minnesota Transfer Curriculum. Currently, an invitation is being sent to those students who are in the top ten percent of their class, it's a, it is a very rigorous curriculum that starts already their 10th grade year, but if others are interested in hearing about it and would like to come next Thursday night at 5:30, please do.
Great article in the Free Press on the Minnesota Transfer Curriculum.
Yeah, that was great. Thanks to Emmy Rimmer, she was a great interview.
All right, Dr. Olson.
Two things. The, the first one, we wanted to start getting the word out, and we want to keep getting it out over the next several months. The middle school building is going to be under almost total construction this summer, starting on June 2nd. So the district office needs to move, the early childhood office, early childhood programs need to move, the middle school office needs to move, and all of our summer school programs need to move. So the preliminary plans right now is that the district office will be moving out to the high school with our business office, the superintendent's office, and the early childhood office and staff will be moving to North. All of our summer school K-8 programs will be at North, if the, our early childhood special education program will be at South. And our registrar, our office for incoming new students and families, will be officeed at North. So it's going to be quite a move, it's going to occur right at the end of the school year, and the moving company, and Seth's busy working on this, is going to come in and over a weekend and overnight and everything else, move the entire, entire building. So, you know, you'll find the district office meeting spot changing in June to the high school superintendent's office. Second thing, remember March 3rd, just a reminder, that meeting will be, study session will be at MVED, and there'll be three things on the agenda, a tour of the MVED building and a discussion of MVED building needs, both short-term and long-term. Secondly, there'll be a presentation on district-wide efforts to increase student achievement, and then third, we'll present the draft of our preliminary three-year budget adjustment plan, so you'll get a shot at that, with the goal of bringing that back at the April board meeting, I think that's April 21st, for final consideration. So it'll go through a number of different opportunities for input along the way. Questions?
So are you taking the, or is the new superintendent, well, you, for the first month, taking the principal's office out there, since that's the most...
We're taking the conference room next to the principal's secretary's office, which is a very nice room, by the way.
So you're going to take the summer off?
So...
They put him on the loading dock.
Yeah, so you're just going to share that little fishbowl there?
No, it's a, it's a big, it's a big conference room that's right next to that, and it's got a, a conference table, so our committee meetings and so forth will be able to be held there.
Nice.
Yeah, it'll work well.
Perfect.
Yep, that's it for me.
Okay. Board members around the table, Ms. Stewie, since everyone else over there is not here.
I know, everybody else left, no. The big thing that I had was just about MVED, but we're going to be talking about MVED, so I just think our new superintendent that comes on needs to be well brought up to date on that, so we can keep our eye on it, but I think the transition will be handled well, so we'll be good. That's all I got.
Awesome. Just a quick update on the superintendent search. We had a productive meeting on Tuesday night, reminder that MSBA is coordinating our, helping us with the coordination of our search. Amy Jordan was here. Productive, kind of long meeting, but we got a lot done, which was good. The application is closed, and we, today, were given access to begin reviewing applications, so the board will begin doing that. Our next meeting is on March 7th for the next step in the process, and then interviews kind of happened really quickly after that. We have the 11th and 13th designated as first round, and then March 20th designated... and then, March twentieth designated as the second and final round. So, we move pretty quickly now. Yeah, in the next month, we'll know a lot more about the, the future superintendent. So, that's great. We did, really good response rate on our, the survey that we sent to the community for input. Two hundred and fifty responses, which is great, from all sections of the community, which is wonderful. And that's going to be really helpful as we think about who we want in the, in the position moving forward.
We can release the number of applicants, right? We can let the public know how many people apply.
We can say the number.
The number, right.
So, we had seventeen applicants, which is really good, which MSBA said tie, it's tied for the lead this year. I think this, for the number of applicants that we got. So, yes, seventeen, which is great. That's all from me. Mr. Cowell?
Yeah, I went to a negotiations seminar, when was that, with Dr. Olson? Yeah, and it was productive, interesting with law changes and so forth. I think we're going to have to do some work on our contract language for our various bargaining units and go from there. Obviously, it's difficult with the legislature getting off to a late start and everything to have an idea of what we're going to have available to negotiate with as far as dollars. So, that'll be a long process. So, soon as we get that superintendent search over, we'll zip right into negotiations. So.
That's correct.
Just looking forward to meeting at MVED in March, but nothing, nothing else. Thank you.
Well, I just want, the, the NAIPAC group works very, very hard on their reports, and they are really making some, some good decisions. And the district is supporting them. And then, also, the History Day, it was good to see faces and judges and people coming through. It was awesome for those kids.
We, oh, committee updates. Are there any committees that didn't get an opportunity to share any updates during the actual meeting that would like to give an update now?
I wish Bill up the education committee just kind of has the updates as they need to during study sessions and whatnot. I don't think it's anything I could just kind of like blurt out here at the end that would be.
Probably the biggest thing addressing student achievement, we'll be discussing that at MVED next, in March. Yep, so it'd be best to just get it there.
I'd say pretty much the same thing. Business committee, budget is, you know, I think, hopefully, the board feels more comfortable with the budget processes. We've tried to be very transparent in the quarterly updates for the entire board. I think will help as we approach with our budget for the upcoming year. And as far as the HR committee goes, it's an ongoing process, and you'll get plenty of updates down the road.
Policy, anything?
Policy committee, you get the, you get the actions every meeting. And Bill, do you want to talk about the legislative committee? Ad hoc or just?
Well, the biggest thing with that ad hoc legislative committee is the day of the Capitol will be March tenth. And we have, what, three people going? Plus yourself?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a busy one. Yeah, it's a busy week.
So, my wife will wonder if I'm living at home.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We have the upcoming meetings of the board listed in here. That includes all of the superintendent search meetings in addition to the regular committee meetings. So, it is, March is a busy month, a very busy month. And then, we'll be back here Monday, March seventeenth, back to our Monday meetings in the governor's room at six-thirty PM. Would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn in a second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Hi. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.